Okay, welcome everybody to the Eastline Board of Finance Special Meeting. Today is Wednesday, May 26, 2021, and the time is now 7:04 PM. If you'll excuse my oversight of the Pledge of Allegiance on our agenda, I would like to do that. If you would join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Board of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With that, we are live on our new audio visual system. It looks great. John has gotten quite the lesson there, so he's, so we're in good hands. I'd like to welcome all of our board members in person. It's good to see everyone. It's good to see Anna Johnson and Karen. And our lone guest speaker this evening is Mr. John McCullough from the Tax Collector's Office. We have a little bit of business with him a little bit later in the meeting. So we're going to start with approving the minutes of the several meetings that we had throughout the budget season, starting with the special meeting minutes of April 8, 2021. Does anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns as they are documented? Karen, excellent job as per usual during this very busy budget season and hours on end of discussion. You've captured everything really well. I do have one slight correction for this particular meeting. It's on page four. It is eight paragraphs down where it says Ms. Alberti asked about the math coaches. So it says that noting that she does not like the numbers. But I wanted to clarify that to ensure that people know that I did not like the numbers shown on the math growth rate chart. And then you can start the next sentence capital, like new sentence. In terms of the elementary schools, however, have they considered da-da-da-da-da? So I did not want people to think that I necessarily didn't like the numbers of the math coaches, but that in that instance I was referring to, I really did not like the numbers that I saw on the math growth rate chart that they had presented. And one, it's same par, well, maybe the next paragraph down where it says, Mr. Newton said that they could not move them around from one school to another. I just wanted to be clear that them refers to the children, the schoolchildren, because that was the part of the discussion where, where he replied to me that it wasn't easy to just move the schoolchildren around each of the elementary schools. And that was all I had for that particular meeting. If nobody else has any comments, questions, or corrections, I'll take a motion.
Okay. I move to approve the Eastline Board of Finance Special Meeting Minutes of Thursday, April 8, 2021, which was via Zoom meetings.
As amended?
As amended.
Thank you, John. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Ann Santoro. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Moving on to the special meeting minutes of April 12, 2021. I'll ask again if anybody has any comments, questions, or concerns. If there are none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the Eastline Board of Finance Special Meeting Minutes, Budget Reviews for the year 2021 to 2022, Monday, April 12, 2021, via Zoom meetings.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Ann Schicello. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Great, thank you. Motion carries. Moving on to the regular meeting minutes of April 14, 2021. Comments, questions, or concerns? There is none. Can I have a motion, please?
I move to approve the regular four minutes of, let's say, April 14.
Very good. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Ann Santoro. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thanks. Moving on to the special meeting minutes of Monday, April 19. If there's no questions, comments, or concerns, we'll go right to a motion.
I'll move to approve the Eastline Board of Finance Special Meeting Minutes of Monday, April 19, 2021, via Zoom meetings.
Thanks, Ann Santoro. Is there a second?
Second.
Great, John. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you. Moving right along to the special meeting minutes of Wednesday, April 21. Questions, comments, or concerns?
So, what is that? I do have just one, one concern. So at this point in our process, we started to, as a board, collect additional information that, that went from, let's say, one board member to everyone. So I just don't know the best way to capture, it's hard to capture all of it. So something I did, I took a couple of minutes and tried to capture some of the key correspondence that, let's say, Camille sent to everyone, or I sent to everyone, or you sent to everyone, so that we could try to at least attach some of what's, all the extra information that we got to some of the minutes. And this, looking at this meeting, this was the most logical meeting to maybe attach it. And then I thought, well, we don't have a number of issues, but the two issues that we spent a lot of time chatting about and deliberating about was, let's say, that, that coach issue and the police hire issue. So I kind of just took a few of those and actually copied, you know, those main ones.
Excuse me, those were the ones sent to me.
No, I know.
I had none of them.
Let me just, let me just.
So I just don't know how we want to deal with it.
Let me just head this off at the pass, so to speak. I think all of those attachments that you're referring to are online attached to these meeting minutes. We did not receive them in our packet, but they are uploaded as supporting documentation to this meeting because I checked all the meeting minutes today.
So you're inter discussion. Okay, thanks.
So with regard to the presentations, and is there something specific that you felt was not included?
I, I didn't think they necessarily were, so that's a good question. So, this is on, okay. So, so looking at the various minutes, I, I didn't necessarily see that we had all of them. You know, for example, when Amy from Board of Education sent us additional information about the math coaches, and then we had a little back and forth on that. I asked her also for the DURG information, and then I sent that out to everybody. So that, that became pretty important in our discussion. So I don't know if, for example, that was there. And then I'm thinking, so that's kind of on the Board of Ed side, and then on the police side, it was, let's see, Ann Caciello's question, set of questions, my question, and Dan's, when you asked Camille your set of questions, and then Dan asked, responded with all of those pieces of information, you know, all those Word docs or whatever, whatever else he sent, I found spreadsheets. So I just, I don't know that for sure, but.
Okay, so here's what we'll do. I will go back and I will look at all of the attached documents to this particular meeting to see that they're all there and present and uploaded. If not, I will gladly collate them and get them to Karen so that they can be included. So let's not approve these meeting minutes tonight. Let's put them on Anna Johnson, if you don't mind, for the next meeting.
Thanks, yeah, and I didn't think Karen would have them anyway because some of those, some of those things were just in, you know, amongst the board members and the department heading question.
And that's okay.
Yeah, it was mine.
Correspondence between Board of Finance members for procedural issues or for information gathering doesn't always have to be included in the minutes, but they do have to become part of the public record somehow. And so if somebody were to, to ask, you know, for NFOWI, you know, they would come here and ask for all the documents. They would be presented, whether they were uploaded or, or not.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
So.
That's good. Yeah, I mean, I mean, we, it was a year that we had, seemed to have more additional information than usual.
Information requests, right.
So, I mean, I still think it doesn't, you know, we don't have to go crazy over every single thing, but I think some of those main issues would be nice to have them attached. So that was my one thing on that. Thanks.
So when I go through that and I collect all the documents compared to what's online, I'll let everybody know it's done, and then each one of you can go online to check to see if it's a complete picture. Does that sound?
That's good.
Reasonable?
Yes.
Okay, very good. So we will put the meeting minutes of the 21st on to next month's agenda. Great, thanks.
Rich has a question.
Oh, yes, Rich.
Yes, going forward for situations like this, I think if we have any correspondence with delegations or departments, either Karen or Anna or both of them should be copied on the request for information and the receipt of information.
Absolutely.
And that way we don't have to run into this situation again in the future.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Okay. Moving on to the special meeting minutes of April 22. Questions, comments, concerns? If there are none, will somebody make the motion, please?
I move to approve the Eastline Board of Finance Special Meeting Minutes of Thursday, April 22, 2021, via Zoom meetings.
Great, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Ann. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to the public hearing minutes of Monday, April 26. Questions, comments, or concerns? If there are none, will somebody please make a motion?
I'll move to approve the Eastline Board of Finance Public Hearing Minutes of Monday, April 26, 2021.
Thanks, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thanks, Ann Schicello. All those in favor?
Aye.
Very good, motion carries. And the last set of meeting minutes are from the special meeting minutes after the public hearing on Monday, April 26. Questions, comments, or concerns? Okay, Karen, I do have a correction on page two, please. I think it is the fourth paragraph down, motion one. Ms. Caciello moved for fiscal year 21 slash 22. That line 01-08-900-051 is reduced from $900,002, and that number that's referenced should be $307,919.
Where was that?
So this is on page two, motion one. The motion reads that the fund balance is reduced from $900,000 to $719,000?
On page four, she reduces it to 307.
No, she, she made the.
That was the first discussion part of.
Actually, she made the same motion twice, Karen. The same exact motion twice. I went back to check the tape today to be absolutely sure. She made the motion to reduce it to 307,919. That was the motion.
I did, because I asked. I remember saying, can I do the same motion?
You did, you did. Yes, Ann Caciello asked if she could make the same exact motion when we circled back to that later in the meeting, and I said yes. Okay, so 307,919 is the number. Also, six paragraph down. Ms. Alberti said that they are not increasing the revenues and that she could abstain or vote no. I think for clarification purposes, if you could please replace she with Ms. Santoro. Just to avoid confusion, because that could read like, I am saying that I would abstain or vote no. But I was advising Ms. Santoro that if she did not approve, she could always abstain or vote no to the motion.
Maybe, if I could say, just to clarify, that Ms. Santoro could, yeah, I guess I'm thinking about better.
What, what was actually said?
Yeah, I think that's what we need.
You need to know what was actually said. You don't get to just create new.
This is true. This is why I listened to the tape, Karen. So this is my comment, and that's why it was unclear to me. It sounded like you were saying that I said I would abstain or vote no, when actually what I was saying is that Ms. Santoro could vote no or abstain. That was the context of the discussion. So for clarification.
Where is it on here? I don't know.
All right, page two.
Five paragraphs down. I, I didn't know the exact words, but I could choose to. I mean, just to make it, it clear that, that Camille was giving me a choice in response to the sentence that came before in the minutes. Whatever, whatever the tape shows or whatever makes sense. Thanks.
I would never change something that I didn't say, ever.
I would too, trust me.
I would never do that. But I do think for anybody reading the minutes, and believe it or not, there are people that do read these minutes. It just, for, it just makes more sense to be precise in that situation. Okay. And that was the only correction I had for that meeting. So I will make a motion to approve the special meeting minutes after the public hearing of Monday, April 26, as amended. Do I have a second? Thanks, Rich Steele. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, with that, we'll move on to new business. Primarily, the purpose of tonight's meeting is to set the mill rate for the 2021-2022 budget in our packets. Anna Johnson has prepared a sheet for us, which details how she arrived at the .15 mill rate increase, which would establish our mill rate for this next budget period at, what, John, 28.51?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for the Finance Director? Yes, Rich.
What, what number is that? The mic has a number, one or two.
Do you stop this number two?
I, I was just wondering for the public if there could be a definition of the abbreviations or acronyms that are on the sheet.
Oh, okay, so.
And perhaps for tonight's meeting, if you could just, just one of that. Thank you.
Okay, so BAA is Board Assessment Appeals, and SMB is Supplemental Motor Vehicle Grant List. So then further down, that would be adjusted grant list, the AEG slash GL. And I think, I think that's it.
Was there any other abbreviation, Rich, that you would like clarification on? Or for our viewers?
No, I think we're okay.
Okay, thanks. So if there's no questions, other questions, comments, or concerns, can I ask someone to make a motion? Yeah, go ahead, Anne.
I move to set the mill rate of 28.51 for the adopted 21-22 Town of Eastline budget.
Thank you, Ann Caciello. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Rich Steele. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion carries, 600. Thank you. Okay. With that, our tax collector is going to enter his busy period now, getting out the tax bills. And part of his responsibility is to approve the, is to provide us with the suspense list to be approved in the amount of $40,121.25, as everybody had a chance to review the list that came in our packets. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. McCullough this evening? So just a reminder that this is a suspense list. It doesn't mean that they become uncollectible. John, I think you can speak to, to the job that, that your department has done collecting previously suspended items. Seems like we've done much better this year in collecting old liabilities.
Yes, we have done better this year. We're just below under $600,000 on previous grants. I think we're projected to collect $450,000. There's a point I'd like to make, that I've been looking into other sources of collection, and I came upon a company called the Tax Serv. They help about 60 other communities in the city with things like suspens lists. And I'm talking with them now, and I would be, I'm thinking of sending out our files for not only this grand, suspense list, but previous year's suspense list to them. And they're very effective, and they would follow through as far as they can possibly go collecting these suspense items.
So what would be the procedure, then? You would contact them, see what the services they could offer, come up with the price, and go before the Board of Selectmen for.
Actually, it would be no charge to the town. They would add, I think, 15% to the balance, individual balances. And that's how they would fund themselves for delinquents.
So the delinquent taxpayer is actually funding this organization?
That's right.
And not the Town of Eastline?
That's correct.
And? And other towns in our area have utilized the service?
Yes, I can't be specific, but I can find individual towns that are.
And so they are tax, a tax collection agency?
They are, yes.
Of sorts, and they're reputable?
Very, very much so. 63 towns they represent.
63 towns in Connecticut, that's quite a bit. Okay, and do you have any sort of collection rate, success rate?
For the Tax Serv, I don't have that number, but I can certainly get it.
Yeah, okay. It's very interesting. Thank you. I don't know, you're doing a pretty good job on your own.
See somebody go back many years.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. But if, if you do pursue that, it would go through the Board of Selectmen? It would come through, or you would need to go through the Board of Selectmen to approve that? And then come to?
As an elected official, I don't know that I would have to.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure.
I don't think I would.
But that's something that you're considering. So you, so you have the ability to, as an elected official, sign an agreement with a third party?
Yes.
Okay. Good, good to know.
Well, there is another one point I would like to bring up. If I could. I've been talking to a attorney named Adam Cohen out of Westport, and he specializes in tax sales.
I'm sorry, tax sales?
Yes. And considering very strongly having a tax sale this year, but this would not begin until August 11, when I would send out demand letters to all the individuals who would be affected by this. I just want to let you know this is my plan.
Okay. Can you explain to us what that, what that entails, a tax sale?
Yes, it would not just be real estate. It would be everything. It would be personal property, motor vehicles, water, sewer, and anything that they owe to the town would be on the, on the demand list. They would have 10 to 30 days to respond. If they don't respond or make good on their delinquencies, I would then turn it over to Mr. Cohen, and he would follow through with the title search for old properties and go through the procedures, and he would read, he would be taking care of this in its entirety. People could not come up to me after I get notices and say, what are you gonna, what are you doing? So what are you gonna do about this? It would be through him. He would take over.
So this.
He's done towns in this area as well.
So this is sort of like the next step after a lien is placed on the property?
Yes, lien enables us to do this, so.
Okay. Okay, well, thanks for bringing that to our attention.
Oh, certainly.
John, I, I do have a question. What, again, could you repeat the name of the collection company that you had?
Yes, Tax Serv LLC.
Tax Serv?
Yes, and they're out of Parsons.
Just a quick question. Can you also like garnish like people's wages through that also?
That is one, one tool I could use, I guess, choose to.
And they would do that with this tax sale?
I don't think it would be involved in the tax sale. You would have an option to give them a payment plan if they're such an economic distress that they can't come through with total amount. You can work something out. But I think it carries more weight coming from a attorney outside the town. Some of these people I see every single year, and, you know, they, they make promises, and yes, I'm gonna come through for you. But I think dealing with somebody from the outside that they don't know might carry a little more weight.
And then, one more question. On the Tax Serv, the 15%, so no matter what the people owe, they just add another 15% of that total amount?
That's their fee.
Is that in addition to like any, like you have the taxes and you have all the interest and late fees? So in addition to that, they take the 15% off of all of that?
Yes, the total balance.
Total balance, okay.
And this attorney, Ab Cohen?
Adam Cohen, yes.
Adam Cohen would work in a similar fashion in terms of payment? When he?
Yes.
He would get paid when the property was sold?
In addition to the actual balance.
So at, at no cost to the?
No cost.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Any other questions for the tax collector this evening?
Are there any disadvantages to doing these? That you see?
A disadvantage?
Yes, anything?
Not to my knowledge. I think he's in very effective. He's done line connected, he's done mortgage, and he has tremendous success with this. From what I've read, what I hear.
Now, is there any way that, like, you would just like foreclose on the property?
I would hate to do that, because I don't know the town that needs a lot of these properties. I think that, that would be the final.
Okay.
Solution.
So they won't be doing foreclosure sales then? As far as you know?
No, we, I tried that once, and it was a piece of property that nobody was interested in. And the town was stuck with it right now.
Then you have to maintain it.
No, it's not even capable of being retained until last year. It's like, just a piece of rock, actually. I worked with the Marks and Market. Nobody had been on it, nobody was interested in it.
Yeah, I know banks sometimes end up owning a lot of property that they don't want, you know, yeah.
I don't know if you're familiar with 99 West Main Street? It's in front of a apartment dwelling. Well, anyway, I took a look at it, and it just looked something out of nightmare. And that's something I've been, I've been able to collect on for years. And it's like, okay, we're not gonna do anything, why don't you take it? It's that kind of hot potato philosophy.
Did you say 99 West Main Street? So right next to Poncliffe?
Yes, it's the next road down. If you turn right and take a look to your right. If you turn right and take a look to your right, it looks like something out of Wizard of Oz or Forest, you know, it's just off.
There's no structures there that are dilapid, it's just raw land? It's just raw land?
Yeah, it's like swamp and rocks.
Yeah, nothing that could hurt the public?
They should probably shouldn't go, you shouldn't walk on the property.
Yeah.
It's kind of dangerous.
Or maybe a sign. Okay. If there's no further questions, would somebody like to make a motion to approve the suspense list as it was prepared for us this evening? Thanks, Anne.
I'll move to approve the suspense list, parentheses 2019, is that correct here? In the amount of $40,121.25.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Pete, you got this one, Pete, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, great, thanks. Motion carries unanimous. All right. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Okay, so moving on to old business, is there any? Anything that our board would like to discuss? If not, are there any board comments? I'll, I'll ask.
Karen did a fabulous job with the minutes.
Thank you. By Zoom, yeah.
Very good. Thanks, Peter. Anybody else? If not, how about a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Thank you, Anne and Anne. Okay. Yeah, wow, thanks. Good to see everybody.